Hi, everyone, please. Hello. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals for Towne Wayham for tonight's meeting, and it is Wednesday, June 12, 2019, 6:30 PM. And we are at room 320 at the multi-service center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass., 02571. I'm going to call the meeting to order. I make a roll call. My far-right member Veronica Devenez, our clerk, Jim Akabachi, my left associate member, Walter Cruz, and myself, the chair, Nazir Al-Khlasie. Just give us a few minutes to do the minutes, and we'll get back to you. Minutes, I read them.
I read them with one small change that I can hand-edit and then comfortable approving as presented.
Okay.
That is on Grasso here.
Also, for the record, Town Consulting Professional Engineer Charles Lauder is here. Sorry, Charlie. All right. So what have we got?
I want to fix Grasso because I recused myself on that one.
You use the microphone, please?
Excuse me?
Use the microphone, we can't hear you.
Oh, you can...
That's all right.
Yeah, no, we're not talking to you.
When we want you to hear us, you will. This one here, I want to, um, I want to put in here that I recused myself. So on 23-19?
Yep.
I'm going to hand-edit this minute noting that I had been self-recused.
Yep. Just for the record, a member Jake Morrison just came in at 6:32 PM.
So I make a motion to approve as presented with that one edit.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. We're just going to go off-order a little bit so people don't have to wait all night. We're going to go with the continued public hearing with 9-19 Farmackanis, 59 Main Street. At this moment, I'd like to close the public hearing because we haven't heard from them.
So moved.
Do I have a second to close?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, I think we should deny without prejudice if you guys agree with me.
So moved.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Do I have a second to deny without prejudice?
A second to deny without prejudice.
Second by Walter, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstain. Again, just for the record, Walter Cruz sitting in the chair for regular member Attorney General Kendrick. All right, very good, so...
And that's 5-0-0. Deny without prejudice.
Right. Attorney Perry, you want to proceed?
So we've got a three-member board?
Three, apparently not.
Pardon me?
Apparently, you're not proceeding, right?
I just assumed not was a three-member.
Okay, so we'll call you in, and you continue. 33-18?
Yes, where are you?
Okay, 33...
Just give me a date.
What's that?
Just give me a date.
Okay. Should we read it for the record, or no?
Pardon me?
Should we open the hearing, or no?
Yes, you should.
You want to open it?
I think so.
Okay. 33-18.
Have a seat if you wish. All right, 33-18, 96 Realty LLC, Ferring Hill Road.
I can't be honest.
Yeah, that's fine.
Once we read it.
Yeah, simple majority.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on June 12, 2019, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass., 02571. To consider petition number 33-18 for a variance slash appeal from the requirements of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 15, to 96 Realty LLC, care of Robert Perry, 191 Main Street, Suite 215, Wayham, Mass., 02571. Seeking to build on a lot that does not meet building or grandfathering requirements, located at parcel A at Ferring Hill Road and Squirrel Island Road, Wayham, Mass., that appears on assessor's map 74, lot 1009, in the R60 zoning district.
Okay, Counselor, so apparently you have...
Private attorney representing the petitioner.
Okay, and apparently you have three board members, so wish to continue till...
I do, I would prefer to have a more complete board.
On the 26?
It's, uh...
June 26, or the next one?
I think the next one...
Or July 10?
I have a late afternoon court appearance on the 26, would probably make me late for you. What's the next one?
July 10.
It's fine.
Okay, can I have a motion to continue, excuse me, continue 33-18, 96 Realty LLC?
Motion to continue.
Okay, motion by Walter.
Second.
Second by Jim, all in favor to continue until July 10, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else was the attorney here tonight? Mr. Bellow, all right.
These guys are going to continue till...
Okay. All right, next hearing, I'm going to accuse myself for conflict. Attorney Bellow's representing Cedar Village, and Jim Akabachi will be acting chair.
How you doing? Again, we have a member from...
I don't know if they opened...
Do you wish to continue?
Yes.
Okay. So are we going to continue on your request? Would you like to... You have a request there?
It's on my request because you can't provide the full board.
So it's really our request, so it's our request. Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to continue until, what's a good date for you, Attorney Bellow?
Uh, June 26.
June 26? Can I have a motion?
I motion to continue.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're continued.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's for both of them, yep, that's for B and C. 16-19 and 17-19.
Okay. 20-19 Coastal Cultivars, Zero Patterson, Brook Road.
Coastal Cultivars, I believe, has put a letter in there that they would like to continue as well.
Have it.
It's in the file.
Just read it for the record.
Could I have your copy just to save myself the time? Apologies for the late notice here, but Coastal Cultivars needs a request, needs to request a continuance for our project at Zero Patterson Brook Road. As the engineering plans are not yet complete, we are awaiting confirmation from the engineering firm on expected completion, and will follow up once we have a more accurate timeline. Please confirm your receipt. There you go, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to continue 20-19 Coastal Cultivars? Have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
June 26?
Yeah, to June 26. We'll continue to June 26.
So we've continued everything except John Ward, is that correct?
Just one second.
Yeah, onset fire, he said.
I'm sorry, I know you're writing...
Let me take notes.
I don't think we've talked about that yet, have we? Onset fire?
Okay, thank you. It's in my folder here, I got it. I just haven't had a chance to open it, that's all. Thank you, Veronica.
Okay, 96 also continued. Farmackanis, Cedar Village, okay, onset fire.
Per our conversation, we would like to continue the ZBA hearing for the onset fire headquarters until the next hearing. Please let me know if you need anything else.
We'll continue till July 10th because I'm not here next hearing. Is anyone from fire department here? None, okay. So we'll continue, do I have a motion to continue July 10?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor to continue July 10?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, so July 10. What are you...
The only thing we got left is 21-19.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. All right, 21-19, I saw that was all done, and what are you guys waiting for? Okay, 21-19, John Ward, 32 North Boulevard. You representing the case? I can't see on it.
Well, do you have a board?
Yeah, you have a board if they present the case.
Right, we can do that.
All right, very well. Just prepare, and let me write a few things.
Yep.
We had members recusing themselves on other items, that's why...
All right.
We were waiting for people to show up.
One second. Onset fire. Charlie, you here for onset fire?
Yeah, I'm about ready to leave.
Yeah, I just don't want to hold you up if you get nothing.
If there's nothing else that you have, I'll go.
There's nothing. Onset fire, Farmackanis gone, Patterson Brook is gone, Cedar Village, I don't know if you're here for Cedar Village as well also next time.
Which, which one?
Cedar Village.
Cedar Village. It's a special permit.
No, I don't think so.
16 and 17-19.
I think you're here for onset fire and Patterson Brook, right?
Uh, the only one I'm aware of is onset fire.
Okay, yeah, probably Patterson Brook.
Patterson Brook, I think we...
All right, I guess we'll see on July 10 unless 26, I'm not here, I don't know what's on the 26, let's see. I don't have an agenda on 26. There's a few things on Cedar Village Coastal Cultivars.
You were going to hit, yeah.
And, uh...
We're going to do you.
That's it?
We're going to do Coastal and...
I'm sure you'll hear from Jasmine, if anything.
Yeah, I haven't heard that they've got the 53G account for onset fire yet.
Oh, they haven't?
I don't know.
That was the reason, I did hear just minutes before the meeting commenced, that was the reason they continued.
Okay.
Because they hadn't got their check-in yet, so...
Okay.
As she informed them, that didn't give you much time to review.
No, I've looked it over preliminarily, and I don't think there's going to be any issues, but if you want anything...
I wish they came if it was only because the check.
Well...
I mean, the other fire department. All right, no big deal.
There's nothing you saw that's going to be a big issue, or?
Not that I saw.
Why don't, why don't you, we put them on the 26 so you don't waste time with them, so that, I know they want to get going.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
And if there's any issue, they could continue.
We have to revoke.
If you don't have them, okay, let's reconsider the motion to continue the fire department from July 10th to...
June 26.
June 26.
Jan going to be back, you think?
Jan should be here, yeah.
Yes.
And Walter and Robert.
Everybody will be here except me.
Except me, but you could be, she sat as well as Walter, so they could both sit in my case, because they were here first. They were here in the first meeting, so they could sit on.
We'll have, we'll have all members that, we'll have five members that were here for every meeting for the...
Yeah, because we were six when we opened it, you have plenty. They have plenty.
Okay.
All right, so let's re...
I motion to reschedule that to June 26 as opposed to July 10.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Walter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, so we, they are for June 26, all right, 18-19. All right. Go back to 21-19, John Ward, 32 North Boulevard.
That hasn't been read yet, correct?
Nope. Yes, no.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on June 12, 2019, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass., 02571. To consider petition number 21-19 for a special permit from the requirements of Article 13, Section 1352, and Article 14, Section 1460 of the Wayham zoning bylaws, to John Ward, care of GAF Engineering, Inc., 266 Main Street, Wayham, Mass., 02571. Seeking to receive permission for an after-the-fact filing enlarging a pre-existing front and rear deck located at 32 North Boulevard, Wayham, Mass. It appears on assessor's map, one lot 384, in the onset village two zoning district.
All right, name and address for the record.
Jim, do I get a file for that?
John Ward, 33 Andrew Street, Cambridge.
I just haven't handled it yet.
Michael Travers, I'm from Sagamore, 91 Cranberry Highway.
Brian Grady, GAF Engineering, 266 Main Street, Wayham.
Okay, Mr. Ward, proceed. Talas, what are you doing?
Well, if I may do the introduction, so my name is Michael Travers. I am presently the owner of Travers Construction and Weatherstone Restoration. I was basically sought by Mr. Ward in regards to a home restoration and landscape project at the above address that we're talking about. And basically, this was, this involved demolition of a outbuilding that was dilapidated and caved in, and this is where the, some of the problems had started, in which I tried to rectify them as time has gone on. I think it's now going almost a year. In regards to the project, we thought we had a few things figured out, and then it got a little dicey, and that's when I had to bring in Brian, which I work with on many projects, to try to sort it out and try to come to a fair, we'll go, decision on his project. In regards to the decks in question, there was a concrete deck on the back of the house, if the plan shows it, that was not big at all, it was basically just like a small concrete cinder block, pair of stairs going up with maybe a four by six feet long, if you want to call it like a, like a small patio that was raised. I did, I did take that off and expand the area, which Brian will have the measurements. And in regards to the front, there was a pair of cinder block stairs that came up, there were preformed concrete stairs that came up to a landing that was on an overhang which is still existing on the overhang of the front door, and we expanded it out, I think, five feet on both sides, but did not encroach further towards the street. We kept to the same depth of the width from the front door, but we expanded like wings out on both sides so that he could sit out and look at the water on the front. And those are our challenges that Brian will then support and give to you in the review. If I may turn it over to Brian, he has the numbers, and he's a little more, I'll be honest with you, it's been a while, and I can't remember all the footages.
All right.
Okay, thank you, yeah, Brian Grady, GAF Engineering. What's happened here is, I think if you look inside the narrative you received, but I can just give you the page that includes the photographs.
Yeah. Do you have any for the back?
No, I'm sorry, I don't have any in the back. What I was just trying to demonstrate in this picture is, you can see that the rear, what's the assessor's had listed as a cottage, that rear building has gone, which you'll see in my narrative, goes to a significant decrease in the lot coverage, which we think is a benefit for the lot. But you can also see that the home was generally in a dilapidated condition, and we think it's the improvements that have been made are improvements of the neighborhood. But what we're here for this evening specifically is, here you can see the pre-existing picture, there was a covered concrete front porch, and the current picture with the new construction, the porch roof is still there, but what Mike talks about, the wing walls, there are lateral extensions, they're not towards the street line, they're lateral extensions on each side. So we don't think we're increasing the non-conformity as far as the setback to the street, but the area is a little larger.
Excuse, excuse me.
Yep.
Through the chair, do you mind if I...
I shook her.
I'm looking at your pictures.
Mm-hmm.
And what I don't understand, I see the, I see the before and the after, and I guess the after is significantly improved, however, what I don't understand, I see the gas meter in the after picture here, I see the porch that you're talking about with the wing walls, but I don't see any way of getting on or off that porch.
Well, there's a cease and desist on it, so...
Right.
Stop before he could put the stairs on.
There will be stairs coming off the front, he has to bring some fill back in, and stairs will be placed once the project is active again.
So in the before picture, the steps came down to a boat, the front of the after picture now, is that correct? Where this lattice work is, that would be a boat, the same distance from the street as the bottom step is in the before picture?
No.
No, sir.
It'd be about the same distance as the platform, and then the landing in the first one, so the width, the depth from the house is about the same, and then there'll be...
Because the fence is gone, it's hard to get a sense of depth.
May I interject for one second? Basically, we've, we've taken the grades down because over the years, his mother is ninety-some odd years old, and she's still alive, and she had really never done anything, so it had a chain link fence in front of it with curbing that we took out, and we're putting back in. So right now, what you look at underneath the lattice and where the sonotubes are...
Yep.
Because we had to put everything to flood zone heights, that still has to come up another eight inches. So the building department's problem in the beginning is, they thought that there was a height problem there, and then they found out that we were putting everything back landscape-wise to the right, to the original grade.
Yeah.
And then they're like, okay, no problem. So that's one of the hurdles that we had to get by. But the stairs, the center stairs, have not been placed on, and we had done a measurement and a picture of the original placement of the concrete stairs, and that's what we're doing right back again, but with pressure-treated stairs.
And they'll show on this plan that I haven't opened yet?
Yeah, they're on, it's on the existing, yes, yeah.
I just wanted to stay with you.
Yeah, I just wanted you to understand with that gas line why it's sticking up so high, because it's not been backfilled.
Right, and I see the water curve as well.
Okay.
Right, and the back deck is pretty much the same thing. It was enlarged, but it's not any closer to the property line than the, than the dwelling is. So we're not encroaching any closer to the property line than what previously exists. And you'll also see in your package that I did meet with the director butters at 30 and 34, and they did sign something in your package stating that they are familiar with the project, they support the project, and they would like the project completed, they're very happy with what they've seen so far, and they have no objection, so that is also in your package. So given that they're the director, director butters, and potentially the most impacted, but they're supportive of the project, we'd like to think that we're in no way detrimental to the neighborhood, and that we're actually, upon the completion of the project, this will be a benefit with the removal of that rear cottage, which was a dilapidated structure, it decreases the impervious lot coverage, so we think overall the project is a benefit.
All right. Veronica, have a question?
No, I don't have any questions.
Jim?
I'm still, I'm perplexed because I'm looking at a letter here on Town Letterhead, signed by the Director of Planning and Community Development, and in his narrative, he states the construction increases the non-conformity for side yard setback and front yard setback. And I'm not sure, listening to you, I don't get it. Go ahead.
Because in, in the onset village as well, at the Wayham Village, it's all existing non-conforming, what you do, you take the average of four or five units next to it?
Yeah.
So if it's pretty close.
I see, I see his comments here about the average of five adjacent, but what I'm not understanding is, where have they increased the non-conformity for side and front yard setback?
I think what his interpretation is, and I maybe have a different view on it, is we're not getting any closer to the property line, but the footprint is getting a little bit bigger, so that can be considered an increase in...
You're not getting any closer, but you've got more square feet than are in non-conformity.
Correct. So I think that's his interpretation.
Okay. That 5.9.
We, we had to go down the road and measure every house, every house, and they were all within six inches.
That's, I'm just...
Yeah, and we did that because he asked us to, and we had no problem doing that.
That's how they are that...
So you haven't got any closer to the front, you haven't got any closer to the side?
No, we just haven't even put the stairs, the stairs.
Those little wings on either side of the front door.
I think there's two stairs, maybe three stairs, I can't remember.
I believe there's only two, once the fill comes back, there'll be two.
Okay.
The deck at the front door that got wider.
The laterally, but not depth.
That's where the increase in non-conformity.
Correct.
And I think the back deck as well, right.
In the rear deck, correct.
The back deck, definitely.
But you took out the building that was...
Correct. It was a big, there was a big outhouse that was caved in.
Really non-conforming, so you actually decreased the amount of non-conformity, even adding those...
Right, I provide those numbers in here, I think it's...
9.3.
And the lot, the building was actually only a foot off the line up on sonotubes and, actually blocks, blocks.
Okay, I'm, I get it now, I understand.
I think the project looks good, I don't see anything wrong with it, I think it's a good little project they did.
Walter?
I'm fine with the front of the building here. This is all new, I don't understand his narrative, he's concerned about the footprint on the rear, or did they cover this back deck?
No, all of, both of them.
The back deck is not covered.
The back deck enclosed?
No.
No.
Not, it's not as a sunroom, so...
No, not at all.
Okay.
In fact, it's not, I'll be honest with you, if you go out there, I think it's about as big, big enough to put a barbecue and maybe two chairs, you know?
And what's the height of the deck in the front?
The deck in the front is smaller, it's about the size of this.
About the size of this table.
It's very small, it's enough for two chairs.
Looks to me like twenty, two feet.
No, so he's only going to have two stairs.
Two steps, yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of this project? Anyone want to speak against this project? Okay, here none, so what do you like to do? Close?
Yeah, let's close it. I make a motion to close this.
Okay, do I have a second to close public hearing?
A second.
Second by Walter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any discussion? Here none? Wishes?
Make a motion to grant.
All right.
Second.
Special permit.
Okay.
Subject to standard conditions.
All right, so we have a motion to grant standard condition according to plans drafted by GF Engineering and stamped on 5/13/2019, and standard condition. And second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. Thank you, carries.
Thank you very much for consideration, thank you.
You're very welcome.
May 13, 2019.
Correct.
I'm buying dinner for everybody at the Pilot House if you want to.
Okay.
Might as well go.
Ma'am, sir, what are you here for?
Um, we're here for the Ferring Hill Road piece, and it's interesting to just watch the interaction.
Ah, okay, so do you have any, you could like discuss, but not a hearing, do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay. Okay, so let's sign this. Anything you guys want to add tonight? Nothing?
It was a nice night.
Yeah, easy night. Sir, ma'am, in the back, you guys want to say nothing?
After, after page.
That's always good. All right, should we make a motion to adjourn?
Once we get this signed.
Okay.
And I see there's a section on the agenda for other applications products, so anything, any comments about the zoning amendments? Anybody?
No.
Okay.
I like them.
I have a question.
Yep.
It was brought to my attention recently. Why is a dental office not considered, I was told it's not considered a medical facility?
Who's that?
It's a different zoning for some reason? I wanted to look at that.
I don't know if it's not considered medical, but it may have, may have a separate designation, because somebody decides they need to list it, so it's suggested, and everybody else goes, yep, and it gets put in there, that's why.
You need me to sign too, right?
Yeah.
Like trying to...
I didn't bring him.
I figure why that would be separate.
There's a lot of things that I...
It's me.
I look through there, and, you know, don't let me loose with a black pen on that zoning by law.
I usually have a bunch of pens, but I went and changed real quick. Pick up the wife and go watch the game.
So, I'll pick that project up, you don't?
Are you big? Are you big that?
Everybody signed?
Yeah, we're all good.
Make a motion to adjourn.
So move, okay, sorry, someone, second, please?
A second.
Second by Walter, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, thank you, thanks, Rob.